This conference will now be recorded.
Okay. I'd like to call this meeting of the Devonport Public Library Board of Trustees to order on this Tuesday, June 18, 2019. And first item on our agenda today is the consent agenda. And I guess before we get into the consent agenda, we'd just like to say for those who may be watching that we have trustee Malavika Shrikanthi on by telephone. So although you're only seeing four people perhaps visually, we are five. Therefore, we do have a core. Okay, back to the consent agenda. Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Soho.
Thank you, Sylvia. Very second.
Second.
Thank you, June. You have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone?
Aye.
Sorry. Motion carries. Okay. Public with comment. Seeing and hearing no one. On to the next item. Reports of communications. The Friends. Do you have anything maybe from the Friends?
The Friends didn't meet.
That's correct.
Because they didn't inform.
Wow.
And so no real update from them. The Capitol Campaign Committee will be meeting next Thursday for their latest meeting.
Thank you. The committee reports. Finance. Move on. Personnel. No man or mat. Moving on.
I'm on the committee too.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We still don't have a report.
Oh, okay.
Well, there's three of us.
My apologies. Yeah, I knew there were.
How quickly they forget. My years of service. Forgot nothing.
Okay.
Unless they're meeting without me, which is definitely possible.
Next item, committee report is advocacy. Malavika, do you have anything to report for your committee?
Oh, no, nothing but just something to thank this lady from Ambrose. Her name is Pam Fox and her daughter is Stephanie Fox. They gave us a generous donation of crap supplies. And one of the thing that included was included in crap supplies was this Krikat machine. And I gave it to our Ms. Brittany Peacock from our library. And they really enjoyed having it for making use of it during summer reading programs. So just a big thank you to these two people who gave us some tremendous crap supplies to use in the library. That's it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Director reports.
Hey. So the first thing I noticed was that the Quadsy Times is going to be doing a big story about libraries. And I think they're going to be focusing on the Main Street Library in particular. So that's nice. As part of that, as part of our conversation with them, they're also going to be doing, working with us on a monthly article about, to go along with what they publish in terms of, you know, the New York Times Bestseller List and things like that, you know, so we'll be able to share what's most popular with our patrons. So what things are being checked out the most. Lexi's going to be kind of taking charge of that force and looking at different topics. So the best sellers are, in terms of our circulation for those, it's hard to say that those are really the most popular because if we have more copies, then more people can check them out. And so our circulation goes up. So we'll be looking at different kinds of categories, genre, nonfiction, those kinds of things, you know, kids books throughout the year. So that should be really nice. We'll be doing that month, perhaps. We're excited about doing that. I noted that the council, the city council approved the contract with Leggett at their last meeting. And I had a call with Mark Brody from Leggett this morning. And he thinks that they can have the files that we'll need in order to work with. The Capitol Campaign Committee has been in contact with a company that does virtual reality and for hopefully late October event about the campaign and the improvements. They want to have a VR tour available for people who attend this. And this company, it sounds like they're willing to donate those services. So the architect thinks that they can have the files ready for that in time. So that's good. So we'll first be working on like equipment placement and some of those kinds of things with priority so that they can get that ready and then they'll move into the bid specs. We have, we've been working on a, what we're calling a staff culture document. And that should be in your packets somewhere.
Yeah, right now.
So this is, I just wanted to share this with you. This is something that we put together working with staff. So this is, this is designed to be an internal staff document. Look at somebody's packet.
Oh, that's okay. That's all right.
Oh, okay. And so we have this here, just kind of a basis of how we expect staff to work with one another, work with patrons, and then what we feel the core competencies are that they need in order to effectively work with patrons, things that we want them to be doing. And eventually with this, we'll be able to also perform as reviews. So right now, we don't have, I'd say, you know, customer service. But we haven't really defined for staff that carefully, what do we mean by good customer service and some of those kinds of things. So this will help us define that. And then on the back, we use some of the tips and tricks and wanted to share that with staff to continue to reinforce that we're really working on a plan of empathy-driven enforcement. And that fits in with how we want to be interacting with patrons. So a quick reminder relates. So talk about how we're going to breathe on it to staff. Yeah, so, so we did the kind of the culture statement and the supervisors worked on the core competencies. And then at the staff in service, we asked staff to tell us how, what does it mean to them and like what do they do in interactions with patrons? And what other things could they addition and put it in boiled down documents. Wanted to let you know that we're working on that.
I have a question. When you say you want to roll it out to the staff, I was just wondering if you could utilize the staff more of a curiosity, maybe maybe some people to help say, you know, this is a document that we support as well so that it's more of a ground up than a, this is what we've decided and now you're, we know you need to. I think it's, I just, yeah, I. Work well. I'm not saying it can't, but I, I have not seen success with that approach. So maybe you've got nuances that you didn't tell us about.
Okay, so yeah, so that's our, the next discussion that we need to have with our supervisory team is how are we going to, how are we going to do that and what's the most effective way to do it.
All of the staff. Also, it boils down to just be nice.
Right. I mean, seriously, if you said all of these, just be nice.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's really what we're talking about. Don't need to commit it to my patients. Well.
The Staff Association is planning a showing of the movie that Malavika has shared with us on Friday, August 2. Would come to one of the local downpour. Yeah, by DVD. I've shown you that. Trustees have received an invitation. Email one out.
Yes. And also, I'd just like to throw out.
Wow. I said, wow, I don't know. I don't know, I have it on my calendar. So apparently I did receive it and I put it on my calendar.
Also, I'd just like to throw out the possibility of the trustees springing for some pizza for the showing.
Sure. Or whatever.
There's our decision. See.
No, no, I mean, what, I mean, what time of day or what?
It'd be, it was six.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Cause some staff will be coming from other locations. We close at 5:30. So by the time they drive down, we figure it'd be good to have something of a, a little more substantial than popcorn.
Where are you showing it?
We're showing it here in the across the hall.
Okay.
Yeah, well, will you facilitate making that happen and, you know, letting us know who needs to order it or get it or whatever?
Yeah, they're going to, the Staff Association is going to try to get some numbers ahead of time. And they wanted me to ask, is it okay if they invite, you know, spouses or older children? I mean, it's not really a movie for young kids, but if there are other people.
Are you going to have a confinement at the facility?
We're not going to get everybody. It's a voluntary thing.
Just wondering if there's another place that might accommodate more people. See library.
That's culture and commitment.
If we find we really have so many people, then we'll.
Sure. Have you ever been in the basement of the police department?
Yeah.
That's a great auditorium. I don't know what this sounds like. It just seems like for a movie it might need to be.
I think that's it.
Okay. So we've added her into the agenda.
All right.
Many reports of communication. So I wonder if I put it on you if you wanted to communicate.
You were done?
Okay. All right. So I don't have a lot. I really, I'm glad, I really enjoyed the meeting last week and I'm, it's always nice when people, the council hear all the incredible things. Really, that was good. So it's listening to some of your needs and I hope, you know, we don't hear those sometimes. So it's to us, it's kind of, you know, there's a very little part that council, we don't, they'll bend. So it's really nice to hear those things to then go back and ask, now is this in here or is this in here? So, so I thought it was a really good, and those meetings have been very productive over the last year with all the commissions. So thank you for that. I just wanted, just to let you know a couple of things. And again, and also thanks for first participation in party in the park. It was everything, it felt like everything that we wanted to happen, I guess. And of course, a lot of that, we had, it was a wonderful crowd. It was a park that doesn't have a lot of people in it and there were lots of people. There were all the departments from the city. There were some not-for-profits there. And, and we had no bugs. I don't know if we'll ever have it. Evening that was great. I mean, the weather was perfect. So the sort of staffing and will probably do this a lot, but I was staffing the history, we have a history thing which Kochi Powers who volunteers a lot for the library, really put together. And I just laminated some sheets that, you know, but she, she's traveling all summer, but she managed us to follow this in. And it was just very well received. And people really enjoy doing at each of the parks is we're trying to change, you know, how did my park get its name and who built my neighborhood? Because we're trying to get people to kind of have more of a sense and not assume that everybody understands where they live and that sort of sense of place. And so that's parks. And some have, sort of every park has history, but some have a much richer history. This one had a very rich one. Van Buren's going to be fun. She said she's got lots of stuff there. So, so I mean, that's going really well. One of the things she mentioned to me was there's some group flyer that the library has about researching your history and maybe it would be good to have those there.
Yep, yep, she talked about those.
Oh, she did. Okay, good. Yeah. So anyway, but in all fronts, thank you for, and I'm sure, you know, thank you for all that. The other thing is that we will be talking about, and this is not directly related to the library, but, but it's a really important thing for our older neighborhoods, which I think is a big thing of mine. But we are talking, we'll be launching this week, we're voting on something that's called the Dream Project. I mentioned this before. Basically, it is a funding that's been set aside and there's never enough, of course, but this is revitalization of older neighborhoods. There is a certain amount, it's a limited amount for people buying. The area is kind of south of Locust and it's kind of the older neighborhoods. And that is, you know, we haven't voted on it yet, so it has to be approved, but a council has seen the concept. So, you know, I can't speak for the council, I think it will. But it's $25,000 to people buying houses within this area for rehab. You know, you have to apply for them. Pretty limited sum if you, it's 10, it's 10,000. About, but then there's 650,000 for, you can apply for improvements if you own a house in this area. And that's 15,000. And so it's all done, going to be done through an application process. So it will start July 1st if we voted in, which again, I'm, I'm going to vote for it. That's great for anybody else. So it's exciting. It's something we've been working toward. And, you know, I, at least Maine is certainly in the area. So it might be, I don't know, they're going to have flyers, I think, things like that. So we'd love to get the word out about that. I think the money will go pretty quickly, but we really, we really want people to know about this. So that's a major project that's been a long time coming. And again, you can never do enough, but it's a start. So, and the other thing, of course, is we're lots and lots of focus on the aftermath of the flood, questions about what our flood defense will be going forward. I think we all, you know, we just dealt with a record-breaking flood and record-breaking number of days and pipes and everything else. So gas forces. And then we also have this, you know, the main, you know, the library, the Main Street Landing and the whole riverfront that had been an ongoing initiative. And now we have a third component, which is the railroad, having to make good what they did to our riverfront. And so that's another, trying to get all those, just like three wheels of things, any one of which would be complicated, but doable, but to get three going at once is difficult. And so, but we don't want to, because the railroad has a timeframe, which we're stretching out, legally trying to stretch out, it's very, very complicated. And so involved in a lot of those meetings, but you'll be hearing more about that. So that's a, that's a big focus right now. So, and that's going to continue to be. So, so those are kind of, you know, those are probably the major things right now going on at council. But again, party in the park all summer. And again, thank you for your participation in that. I hope they're going to continue to be. If there is all as good as last Thursday, we're, we were doing, we're doing what we need to be doing there. So. No, we did, this was something, an initiative that we really started working on maybe three months ago. And so we knew we couldn't do every, every week, but there's two in June, there's two in July, there's two in August, and there's one in September. And it's everything from, so there's some of these parks you're not going to, I didn't know where they were. So do you know what Wayland is? Do you know where Wayland Park is? Wayland Park is behind the Machine Jet. And I, I'm like, where is it? Wayland Park, Slattery Park, which is there at Northwest, is it Northwest Boulevard? Yeah. So off Northwest Boulevard and like Central Park, you know, that area. It's not Central Park. It's Northwest Boulevard and 46th Street. Beyond, just beyond the mall. Okay. Tyler, which is over just north of Locust, around Grand, named for the old Tyler School that was there. Like.
Peterson Park.
Peterson, Peterson, which is, that is off of Central, Central Park, which is named for a farmer that owned that property. Only name I've been able to find it. And then what's the new neighborhood, Eastern Neighborhood?
Prairie Heights.
Prairie Heights. I think that's, is that seven? So I think that's got them all. So yeah, and Van Buren and Corquille. So, and obviously some of these neighborhoods have more history, but one of the things that I found in this was a book that, it was a research that a gentleman had done of, established on neighborhoods between 1900 and 1950, which the library didn't have. Started at Kochi and she's like, we don't have that. So she contacted the ship of, and they have, now the library has a digital copy. But this really talks about some of these parks, like around neighborhoods, like around Peterson, that were established after, that now come into their own in terms of historical, potentially historic. So, you know, those are as interesting, I think, in finding out who built my neighborhood as everything else and a little simpler because these neighborhoods, unlike Corquille, were kind of built as neighborhoods. So we'll be able to talk about that. And I think Prairie Heights, about the idea of the, you know, the, you know, the new, the, you know, putting back old-fashioned neighborhoods. So we'll try to do all the context to that. So anyway, that's fine.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to new business. Recreditation task schedule, that was part of the package.
So, so yeah, so now that we have our recreditation, it's time to start working on it again. So Casey and I put together a bit of a schedule and there're really just two things that I think where we were a little bit challenged this past time in terms of getting things done on time. And so I wanted to just highlight those. So the, the business plans that are part of the city budgeting process, we sometimes have challenges getting the board to be able to approve those before they get sent to council. And mostly because of timing in terms of when, when we receive those and then when they have to be due back, they often have to be due back within, like we might get them right after award meeting and they're due back before there's another board meeting. So in order to have the trustees approve that, which they should according to, just because you should, because you're responsible for it, but also for accreditation purposes. So we might, just a warning, we might end up having to do a special meeting or something like that specifically on those business plans. And then the library director, the annual review, that's something that they're asking for dates on, you know, to be done for every fiscal year. You heard just, we skated on that one, just relaxed for that, but if they would, they'd probably run into some issues. So, so that needs to be done annually on the, for the fiscal year. So the fiscal year ends June 30th. So if the personnel committee can get that done sometime September, October timeframe, since they're asking for a date when that happens, is what we have to report. I think that that would be helpful to us.
Have you communicated that to Matt?
I had not. This is, yeah, I didn't know he wasn't going to be here. So, yeah. So we'll, we'll let him know that. So just, just kind of a FYI, and that's why we put this together, to look at those things that, to make sure that, you know, we're on task. And a lot of those, Casey, you know, can keep us on track and does keep us on track with policies and things like that. But some things have to be a little bit more board-driven than the evaluations as well. So that's just kind of more of an FYI than anything.
It's required by accreditation.
Amy did a lot. But she's generous with breaks.
Okay.
Not great, but.
So just a question about the accreditation schedule. Are we in fiscal '20 now?
Not yet.
Next week?
Next week. Two weeks, we'll be in fiscal '20.
Okay. So the ones on here that have 2019, is that in calendar stuff? 2019?
Yeah, we did this on a calendar year.
Okay.
Even though they want some of these things on the fiscal year, it, yeah.
Thank you.
We, yeah.
Next item on the agenda is to review and discuss the library voidering policy.
This is pretty brief and looking at it, we didn't have any recommended changes to it. So, you know, anybody else have any questions or suggestions?
Steve and Amy.
Yes, Malavika.
I just, I just had a quick thought and I'm, is there, is there any way that like, you know, the second paragraph, the first line, which says loitering is not allowed in the library's parking areas, et cetera, including the front porch of the main library? Now, is there, like this policy is for all of our three libraries, right? Is there any way like we could make it non-specific? I mean, this talks just main, right?
No.
It, it should apply for all three, correct?
Correct. Yeah, it does.
So should, should we take out main? I don't know.
They don't have porches. Do the others have porches?
No. You know, and we, we certainly could. I think the reason that, because it should cover on, I mean, if we say that loitering is not allowed in the library's parking areas or grounds, the front porch is our, is the library grounds. Right. Here at main.
Yeah. Oh, right, right.
Yeah, I think we called that out initially. We don't have to because that's the main area that we have trouble with loitering.
Right. Oh, right, 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 right. I mean, I mean, I mean, at Eastern, for example, that one, it's an open thing, but it won't be called, like, it's also like a porch kind of a thing? Like, you know, as you enter, you have that enclosed area. It's, it's enclosed by two walls on the side, like, you know, like, kind of like a front porch, like, you know, what if people?
You say, including the entry areas or porches of the library buildings? I'm just, I'm trying to.
I'm just a thought. Yeah.
That cover what? I don't know if you know.
Does it have to say main?
Or then she just.
Or can we just take out the, the piece about the front porch and just say that loitering is not allowed in the library's parking areas or grounds? Cause that would cover everything.
Everything, everything, yeah?
Would have been the front of main as grounds. We know what we're talking about, but maybe that's why they put it in. What did you say again? I said the front entry areas or porches of the buildings, of the buildings. And that covers all of that.
All of our buildings?
Yeah.
Yes.
Cause we haven't had issues at Fairmont. I mean, there's, there are benches, you know, at the front of all the, of the branches, of both branches, and we haven't had necessarily loitering there. Though we get the occasional hand handler at Fairmont.
Oh, okay.
But, but we really haven't, but that doesn't mean we couldn't have trouble with people just hanging out and.
But there, no one's just strolling along there and just, you know, other places near gather there. So whatever.
Yeah, it's so visible here at main. It's, I think, why people notice it. But we can try to change that to be inclusive.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No, thank you.
So one of the things I was wondering about, and we can actually look to the future for this possible change, but it refers back to the behavior policy as far as how it's handled. And, and you know, maybe something on the other hand, we want to do now, but, and in the behavior policy, loitering is one of the items there. So I'm wondering if there was a specific reason why we even had a separate loitering policy.
I think we're trying to define what loitering is. And when we were really having a lot of challenges with it, especially here at main, and we wanted to get, you know, some signage up and we wanted staff to feel comfortable doing that. And they, they were looking for more of a definition of. And they, they were looking for more of a definition of what is loitering? It says that we can't do that in the, in the behavior policy. But what is loitering? And so then we went and got the definition, working through city legal on that. Like, what, how, how can, how, how is it legal to define that? And, and how should we do that? So that's why there's a policy. It's, you know, pretty much like everything, we ask people to not do that behavior if it's something that they're not supposed to be doing. And
I mean, how does it, okay, I'm the librarian, doing my job, doing this, doing that, doing all the things I do. How is it I'm gonna even notice that? I, I mean, really, like, it could be a full-time job if you really wanted to be.
Sure, absolutely. And, yeah, generally, we notice something else going on with that. You know, somebody's smoking. And, and, and a staff member might see somebody who's out there smoking. And, well, that's the smoking policy. That doesn't, you know, necessarily apply to that. But a staff, I mean, not the front windows, a staff member might notice that there's somebody there, you know, waiting, sitting down, doing whatever, eating. And then we might, they might notice that person, you know, a half hour later. And at that point in time, they might ask them if there's, you know, is there something we can do? You know, they've been here a long time, that kind of thing. So, but if somebody is sleeping now, you know, in the front or whatever, that, that gives us a way to approach that. Every so often, on the south side of the building, and on the alley side of the building, you find people who stretch out for a nap.
Yeah, I mean, we don't even let people do that at Cafe Abine, which is a place designed for, you, you can't camp there, you can't sleep. I mean, it's So the, so having a definition is that you, is legal definition is good, it's more solid ground.
Yeah.
It's tricky business.
It is, and it's tricky business.
So I think we just have to maintain a balance of actions and reactions. And it sounds like we have. I mean, I haven't heard anything.
Perhaps, perhaps if the security guard makes rounds, they could
Yeah, yeah, I think we, you know, it's not one of those things where we're timing people, you know, for how long they're out there and, and doing it constantly. So, but usually, I would say if, if we find that we have concerns with some, with loitering and or, you know, the security guard notices that, the person's probably been there at least a half hour, I would guess. So, you know, by the time we notice that, that somebody's really been hanging out for a long time.
Any other comments, Malavika?
Oh, no, no, thank you, Steve. No, thank you.
So.
We'll make those changes and then you can have per approval of them.
Okay.
Next item, review and discussion of the library gift acceptance policies. Maybe it's been a long time.
It's gonna be like, yeah.
About a year.
Yeah, there were, there were issues, but now they've been resolved. Yeah. As you know, this is a really, really recently updated policy. And it was designed to carefully, you know, mirror some of the language in the Friends gift policy as well. The only thing we're thinking about changing is the third page under implementation. So there's a sentence there in red, for something that clearly indicates that it's the prerogative of the board of trustees to decide how they're going to recognize gifts, including making up and that that will be done on a, on a case-by-case basis. And it's up to the board of trustees to make those decisions.
Any questions or comments regarding this policy?
Steve, I just have a question, not a comment. I just had a question for Amy. Amy, just a quick question out of curiosity. When we, when we get a gift, like in memory of somebody, or they say buy books in memory of somebody, and it's a cataloging question, do we, do we include a note saying that it was a gift in honor of something, something in our cataloging record?
No, we don't put it in the cataloging record.
Okay. Oh, okay. That, that, just out of curiosity. So, thank you. That was it.
Any other questions, comments? Just, I have a question. Did we talk one time about adding a brochure around gifts? Or was that, maybe I'm thinking of the Friends.
I think that was the Friends.
Okay.
I mean, you, you would really prefer, and I think it's more advantageous to folks to make their contributions through the Friends. Because they, it's not as much advantage as it used to be with the changes in the tax law. But it's a, it's a not-for-profit agency. So, but we do sometimes, it's probably more memorials than anything else that would be, things that would come directly to the Downpour Public Library.
And so people on the tax break now, under the new tax law, they just have to make it a really big gift.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, we're twenty, over 25,000.
And we're absolutely willing to accept those.
Yes, no. You're gonna get our book collection. And I'd rather you have it now. That's another story.
Okay, so I think with that, what's plan two?
Sure.
We have no old business. So I guess I just mentioned that I've received an invitation to meet with the mayor and talk about libraries, library trusteeship.
Move me back up, Steve.
Can you stand by?
Just asking.
Okay. So if there is nothing else to come before this forum, I would accept a motion to adjourn. May I make a duty for a second?
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor of the motion, please, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you, Malavika, and hope you're feeling better.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Steve.